Yeah, that's probably who did it.
All right, we'll call the meeting order at nine o'clock. Uh, the, uh, we want to go ahead and start with prayer and the pledge. Supervisor Steen is going to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Father Lord, just thank you for what we've had this past week, Lord. Madison County, Lord, as far as the things that we're trying to do to make it a better place for everyone. And Father, we just ask for your blessings to be, to continue to be upon us, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute. I pledge the allegiance of the nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
Mr. President, if you'll look at your agenda, it shows a February 16th date. You may remember that we had previously adjourned to February 16th at 5:00 PM. When that time arrived, we were under such weather conditions that...
To continue the meetings at 2:00 every day. We made announcements at the front and rear entrance of the board, uh, meeting entrances to the public to let them know, uh, in accordance with law, that those meetings would be continued day to day, uh, and ultimately until today at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. Mr. President, could I get someone to acknowledge that in the meeting to explain the difference in our original planned date and the meeting date?
Can we get a motion on that? Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, Mr. President, prior to the weather storm that we had, you were asked to declare a state of emergency for us to be able to appropriately respond to the events that were pending. Could I get a ratification of your declaration of emergency?
Motion to ratify.
Is that second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, Mr. President, supervisors, just to give you a little clue as to what all's been going on. Uh, you know, fortunately, most of us get to sleep several hours each night. Sheriff's Department and other functions of the county run 24/7. Uh, Mr. Sheriff, would you like to tell the supervisors what you and your department saw over the past seven days?
Uh, well, we had, obviously, as you guys know, a lot of ice, a lot of snow, a lot of bad road conditions. Uh, first of all, I want to thank all of the other first responders and emergency county personnel, road departments, fire departments, EMA Albert and his... Uh, we did not have a lot of issues. I don't think we had a, uh, any significant, uh, emergency accidents. We had a lot of, uh, vehicles that slid off the road. Freeze down, uh, Cornelius, I don't think we had any major road blockages that lasted any length of time, so... Uh, working with us, bearing with us when we did have some, some blockages, but, uh, all in all, went, went pretty well.
Okay, and the sheriff?
Few trees downland popping from the ice freeze. Had a lot of pine and cedar trees that had popped in, but we were able to get out to maintain everything. We able to get out, put something on the bridge before the sneaky come in and stuff, so pretty much everything was smooth after that.
All right, thank you. And then, uh, Albert Jones, EMA Director, was mentioned also by the sheriff. Uh, I just want to say that Albert has been working with MEMA, uh, various county departments, medical facilities in the area, as well as first responders. Albert, any comments from you?
Good morning, boy. Only thing I'd say, um, all in all, Madison County held up pretty good. Um, we had different spots with power outages, water, as well as lights, but told overall Madison County, everything went good. Only thing we'll be facing now is trying to, we probably gonna have busted... ...facility that's around, we may have to distribute water to them so they can flush the toilets and have drinking water. So that's where we are this morning.
Thank you. Also, we're under a boil water alert for this building or all of our buildings in the city of Canton, and emergency management and Albert have been making sure that we have drinking water in all of the buildings this morning. He mentioned, uh, electrical outages. Right now, there are 256 outages on the Entergy system, uh, and that is down from right at 4,900, I think was their peak number, uh, last week. Also, Tim, uh, and I have been in contact throughout this week, uh, over road conditions and, and issues affecting bridges. Uh, Danny, uh, and the Buildings and Grounds crew have been out taking care of our buildings, fortunately. Uh, while Albert mentioned, uh, pipes burst, we have, I think, only two buildings where we have, uh, a problem with our plumbing this morning. Uh, Heath Hall, our IT group, our HR group, has all been on standby, working for things, keeping our website updated and information distributed. Uh, our purchasing department has been involved in a couple of issues that we had to purchase, uh, this week, and then the comptroller's office even ran a payroll, uh, last week. We were very fortunate, most of our citizens followed the admonitions as the sheriff, uh, sheriff indicated earlier. Uh, and generally, those are a rundown of the things that have happened over the past seven days. Garbage collection resumes this morning on regular schedule. Any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you for what all of you did.
Well, actually, we'd like to thank all of you, because you all were out there. You know, Albert kept me, um, informed all the time, and I had, uh, to move around a little bit myself because of my other business, and Albert was always telling me which best way to get from A to B without running into the ditch, even though we came close a few times. But, uh, Albert did a great job, and so did Cunyus. So we'd like to thank all of our, our team that's out there helping our citizens get around in times like this, and, uh, I, I know they appreciated it.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Banks? I would just like to piggyback on, on what you just said. Uh, first of all, want to thank all of, uh, the first responders. Checking the welfare of the children. Thanks, uh, Albert, outstanding job. Cunyus, uh, breaking through creases and ice, uh, getting to people's houses, make sure that they still there and still living. Thank you. Uh, thank you to, uh, Farm Haven Volunteer Fire Department. Marshal Chief Brown and his crew. They went beyond the call of duty, uh, risking their safety. I want to say thank you to, uh, CMU, uh, East Madison Water Association, Entergy, uh, for working basically round the clock, because we had people stranded in northeast Madison County for several days with no heat, no water. Uh, these guys went out and checked on them. Uh, I want to thank some private, uh, citizens that I know I'm gonna miss a whole lot of, a whole lot of. One is, uh, Marlo's Backyard Barbecue. Uh, he donated food. Mister and Mrs. Washington from Valley View do- donated food. Uh, Mister and Mrs., uh, Roger Scott donated food to people that couldn't get food. Uh, there's so many more. Uh, I'm just telling you, thank you from all the citizens in District Five. Thank you. Job well done, and I think we'll learn a lot from what we experienced the last four days to build on, to make it even better, to respond to the taxpayers of Madison County. Thank you.
That's right. Any values?
Now, I, I just agree with what y'all have said. It's hard to add to it because everyone was out working, and, and we all appreciate it, and it shows. It showed, so, uh, thank y'all very much.
All right, um, Mr. Justice Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the February the first 2021 Board minutes. I would ask that there are no changes of any kind. The plea, the board please approve said minutes.
Is that a motion?
Motion for approval?
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are no concerns, citizenships?
Mr. President, none signed up before the meeting, and none have signed up this morning.
Okay. Okay, consent items.
Motion on consent item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Business items. Library person is not here yet.
Mr. President, the... One agenda.
Okay, good.
Oh, I'm sorry, the first meeting in March, I should say. I'm not sure that's March 1.
Okay, uh, Tim Bryant, county engineer.
Engineer of the county?
Engineer of the county.
Got two items for you. First is a preliminary plat for Pinehurst of Carolina. As you know, typically, Scott Weeks does these, but this one has a variance request of a dead-end street longer than 500 feet. So we request that you approve the preliminary plat, and you also allow them a dead-end street longer than 500 feet.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second item I have is, uh, a contract with Headwaters Natural Resource Group. This is in response to the Bachelor Creek issues that we're having on flooding. We have asked that Headwaters get with MDEQ and also the Corps of Engineers to see what requirements that we're gonna have to, in order to do some work on that creek.
Motion. Is this, oh, second? All in favor?
Uh, Mr. President, I do have a, have a question.
Okay.
This is just for Headwaters to get with another agency to see exactly what we can remove? Or are they planning on removing the item?
No, they're just plan, they're doing the upfront work to see if we're allowed to remove and what we're allowed to remove.
Okay.
And this all has to do with that Chris Oak plant on Covington Street.
Right.
And the contamina, potential contamination of Bachelor Creek.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Next. You finished, Tim? Okay, attorney Espy?
Good morning, boy.
Morning.
All right.
Good morning.
Oh, the first... The bill of exceptions lawsuit, uh, and the $60 million damages lawsuit both dismissed with prejudice, which means that they cannot be rethowed ever again in life on the same set of facts. So that's something that we insisted on, and we were able to get. So the orders have been filed, entered, and you have them before you, and I'd like, uh, motion that they be acknowledged.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge, uh, both the, uh, NCL Waste Court Order and the Court Order of Dismissal.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, the other one was, you remember the board last meeting agreed to sell 1.52 acres of land to Key Crete? The, uh, it has been, uh, prepared and ready for signature by the board president, and the purchase amount is available to be given to the administrator, and, uh, we need to allow Chairman Banks, President Banks to sign the deed.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
Uh, second by Supervisor...
I'll second.
You'll second. Supervisor Steen, motion made by Supervisor Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Come on. Okay, next is our county administrator.
Mr. President, supervisors, there's an item here, uh, attached to your agenda related to our continuing disclosure with the Securities and Exchange Commission. This is just an update document to, uh, file that we need approval for you to sign on.
Okay. Is that a motion, please?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our, uh, comptroller.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Um, the first item I have for your consideration and approval is the budget amendments and enter fine cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
The next items are 43 through 46, which is the general claims docket and three payroll dockets.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Baxter, second by Supervisor Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 47 is the approval of the wedding reports from the Justice, Justice Court.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Hey, wait, I thought that is 48, so it's 47?
Yes, 47. I have it as 47.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 48.
And the last item for your consideration and approval is the Fleet Corps claim docket.
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Goody, goody.
Thank you.
Okay. Justice Clerk, one more.
Uh, nothing further, Mr. President, thank you.
Sheriff Randy Tucker?
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Do we have any old business? Or you wouldn't want to say?
Uh, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, I've just got a couple of things. I've put in front of you, uh, those inspectors looking for another contract inspector. Uh... And I have a Donald Lawrence... Jeff Williamson.
Mm-hmm.
Is that it?
Yes.
Well, judging by the resumes, it looks to me that Jeff Williamson has the most qualifications.
Uh, he is highly certified, there is no doubt about that.
I'll make a motion to hire him.
I'll second that motion for a little further discussion, Mr. President. Uh, Scott, this is, from what I understand, uh, this is not to, um, hire full-time in-house. This is to, for contract work, correct?
Yes, this is a contract inspector, just like the two we have.
Okay, that's, uh, so this person would be used, you know, as, as, uh, as often as we call and, and ask, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I, I, I was, uh, you know, you have seen this other persons that, um, certifications and, you know, I'm aware of Donald Lawrence, I know Donald Lawrence was, that, that has, um, a lot of, uh, yes, certifications, and, and as well, he, uh, is, uh, you know, has a lot of experience. The, you know, the, the job that you have, uh, or have a need for, um, I, I would believe you're gonna end up having inspections, you know, all over the county, and in certain areas where I know that, uh, there may not be as much experience in those areas as it is in others in terms of knowing the people and knowing how to find the locations and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, so, but, uh, I, I, I'll see how you, how, how we vote on this, and you may need, uh, you may need additional help. I, I, I don't know.
I, I would like just to make a substitute motion to hire, uh, the guy that Trey just said and Donald Lawrence. The reason why, 'cause I think we got two inspectors like that. One, I think, is at retirement stage.
Oh, yeah.
And there ain't no reason to wait until we in the position again. If we going and, and, and feel it now, we know in a month or, or, or six months, we won't be right back to the, what we doing again. We have somebody already in place.
Well, that does make sense. I'll second that motion, 'cause that does make sense, and at the same time, it doesn't increase, uh, employment since it's all basically a rotation, uh, and you may need the help. And, and at the same time, if, if you don't get people coming in and, and building anything, none of them will, will be working. So I'll, I'll second that substitute motion. Uh, we're gonna vote on substitute motion first. Um, let's have a vote, uh, on the substitute motion. Vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed?
No.
Okay, that was, uh, you voted no?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so the substitute motion failed, the original motion then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's have it.
One, one thing that I would, uh, suggest, Mr. President, is I, I did not know the person that you recommended, but I would recommend that... In, in helping and doing this type of work for them to continue to get certified, to get certifications. And when this comes open again, uh, they would be, you know, well-qualified and have certifications, uh, you know.
I, I'd like to give a call to vote, uh, Mr. President.
Okay.
You'd like to do what now?
We want a roll call on the vote?
Okay.
Okay, on the second, so that would be on the motion. The, uh, Supervisor Steen, how do you vote?
Which motion we voted on?
The primary motion is...
I voted yes.
Okay, Supervisor Baxter?
Primary yes.
Okay, Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
No.
And Supervisor Banks also voted no. That was a 3-2 vote. Okay. Next, uh...
Mr. President, I would also, uh, like to, y'all to direct Mike, Mr. Espy, to get a contract, uh, for this contract work, work on the paperwork on that.
Yeah, make a motion on that. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No. And question to Scott.
Yeah.
Scott, it is, this guy certified as you've been talking about already?
The Williamson?
The one that, uh...
The one that you just voted for?
Yes, he is, he is almost a master cert- certified inspector. He's only like two tests away from being at the top of what you can be.
Mm-hmm.
I, I put the resume there on your desk, um...
Mm-hmm.
It is...
We didn't say that, 'cause I think we voted a month and a half ago to vote the, how this master certified person, and he didn't even show up for now inspection.
He, he took another job, yes.
He took another job. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mr. President, how was the vote on that last motion, if you don't mind?
3-2?
3-2.
I do have one more thing. Uh, this was a table from the last meeting, Percy Grant. That was the rezoning R2 to C2 on Highway 16 West. Uh, did meet with him and came up with some conditions on, uh, opening and closing times, or, or actually the closing times of a Friday and Saturday close at 1:00 AM and Monday through Thursday close at 10:00 PM.
Yeah, uh, Scott and I met with Mr. Grant, and, uh, I think we came up with some different, like I said, time to open and enclosing that, uh, we can live with. And he understand that, uh, if things not ran right, it can be changed. So I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, new business. I have a new business item, so I'll go first. Lake Loma Utility District, uh, has re-nominated, uh, Mr. William D. Seagrove for an additional five-year term as the commissioner on the Lake Utility District Board. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, uh, Mr. Seagrove to that board.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one new business as well.
Okay.
Uh, as always, we're, uh, trying to find help and money to do many of these projects that, that we currently have committed to and, and that's underway. And I would like to, uh, make a motion, uh, for the president to sign, uh, you know, to send a letter to our, our delegation, our senators, representatives. And I'm gonna read this motion off, uh, just to make sure that it's, uh, that is correct. Uh, the motion is to authorize president of the board to send a letter to our congressional delegation, delegation updating the county's efforts and requesting federal support for the county's comprehensive watershed management program, reunion parkway crossing, bill grant, public safety, local law enforcement programs, and broadband access.
All in favor?
I spoke with the president about this yesterday, and I wrote all the board members about this last evening. Midweek... From the attorney for the city of Canton, and the three documents all related to the same issue. There was an ordinance passed by all of the Canton aldermen, signed by all of them, resolutions signed by all of them, and, uh, an agreement which is before you today. And all of it relates to the intent of the city of Canton to abrogate or to abolish their municipal elections commission. Inside of the resolution and the ordinance, they had to set forth the reasons by statute, and the reasons generically were, uh, it was more efficient for them to cancel the municipal elections commission. And then, more specifically, in the resolution, uh, it, um, it gave as a reason the difficulties they had in the last municipal election, 2017, to, uh, go through the process without criminal procedure. Some members were, some, some were indicted. So, uh, it basically said that the city of Canton felt that it would be more efficient for them in the upcoming elections, which are coming up in April, to abolish their municipal elections commission. And by statute, uh, they were evidence in their intent to, uh, enter an agreement with Madison County for the Madison County Election Commission to conduct the elections of the municipal, the electoral, the, the former municipal elections commission. Now, by statute, this is proper. Uh, there's a statute, pretty new, it's 2315-221. It says that, uh, if there is no other option, the city election commission competition, the county, within the county where they're located, to conduct their elections. And that's everything. That's polling locations, ballots, hiring poll workers, the whole shebang. Um, and the statute says that, uh, the county within where the city resides, uh, if there's no other option, they have to... ...level. It's a new statute. It says that, um, the fee is set by the municipality, but the agreement must be agreed to by the county. All right? So, so... So, so inside the ordinance, they set the fee for you. They want to pay $10,000 per general election and $5,000 per runoff, municipal runoff, into the future. And that's set forward in this agreement, which is before you today. Now, I noticed that the Madison County Election Commission, they've also been informed, they have a special meeting on the 26th But the agreement has to be signed by you, by the President's Board, and agreed to by you. So it's time urgent. Every member of the board signed it, but the mayor did not. I'm not, we don't want to get into their business, but that's, but you know that if every member signed it, then even if the mayor vetoed it, they could override the veto. So this is before, they have abolished, the city of Canton has abolished its municipal election commission. Elections are, municipal elections are coming. They're asking you to take over. The election commissions are authorized, the Madison County Election Commission to do it and to pay them $10,000 per general and $5,000 per runoff. And there is a statute which says if there is no other option, that you must do it.
Does the statute say the fee for the election commission?
The statute says that, well, the statute doesn't say that. The statute says the term general, the term general opinion say that the municipality, in fact, the words were, "It has long been held in matters like this that the municipality will set the fee to pay the county." But it doesn't say the county has to agree, all right? So if we pass words, this agreement before you is an agreement from Canton and intent to enter into an agreement with you. So they're intending to enter agreement with you, whereas a provision is they intend to pay you $10,000 and $5,000. It doesn't mean you got to agree to it. So to me, that may be a matter of negotiation.
Yes, the next person going to be Sheldon, if you got any knowledge of how, how much your election will cost for the city of Canton?
Mr. Griffin, I'm thinking back. You may recall that about four years ago, the legislature changed the law and required your county election commissioners to perform the same function for the municipal school district elections. And then the school district was required to reimburse us the cost. My recollection, and I do not have it in front of me, but I remember going back and forth with them. My recollection is that it costs $58,000 for a school board election.
Wow.
And the school board is a little bigger now.
It is going to be a little bigger.
A bit bigger.
Yeah, well, you, space-wise, I don't know, population-wise, the school board election was outside of the city limits of Canton.
Right, it's bigger than the city limits of Canton.
Geographically, but you only had a couple of locations to vote. The city of Canton, of course, we're talking about a municipal election that didn't, so I don't think there's apples and apples, in other words. I do believe that before we could move in any given direction, we need to get rid of the unknowns. And the unknown right now is how much is it going to cost? You know, offering me $10,000 to do a $50,000 job is not a good offer. I don't know what the job may, it may take. But I don't think, I think $10,000 is going to be low. Elections are expensive. The, our election commission is, will be meeting later this week.
Friday.
And I don't know, somebody needs to be getting in touch with them, and we need to be working on cost.
Well, that was my question to the attorney. Did the election commission come up with this $10,000? And we think that they did not.
No, it came from, it came